Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of February 29th, February 19th we as presented.
I second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Our next order of business is election of officers. I was wondering if we'd like to hold that off until the next meeting where we have more members.
Oh boy.
That sounds good. Probably a nice virtual gathering. Could I get a motion about that? I mean, shall we postpone election of officers until our following meeting?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Our next order of business is public hearing number one, expansion of a nonconforming use. Robin Sanctuary, would you like to tell us what you'd like to do?
Thank you. Alright, so I think we have papers that show, this is the diagram of the first floor and what we propose to do. There is an existing structure up here on this building. What we'd like to do is take that off and put a farmer's porch across the front of it. It will stick out no further than what's already there. So it's about six feet and it's 28, 26 wide. What I'm going to do, what I propose to do is have the stairs under the porch, under porch roof. So the tenants will be coming up and then starting their steps and it will be covered. But you don't see that, you'd see it at the porch. So this will, this will allow the tenants to have the two upstairs apartments to have access to their apartments. Because at this point, we don't have apartment crews.
So this is the view from the street?
This is the view from the street, yes.
And what you're essentially doing is extending the road from there?
Right, I mean, right now it's all closed off, but this is going to be totally open. Hopefully it'll make it a little better and a regular, whole building.
And so what we're discussing here is the setback, is that it?
Yes.
Since the building itself is nonconforming, do you see an expansion of the porch? It's an expansion of a nonconforming use. Are there any questions from the audience?
There was no significance to the memorial in front of that building. Was there the, at the time that the Legion?
No, I've asked a Legion member, you know, about it. What I hope will be coming down.
It will be.
Yes, I did speak to a Legion member on that and so, yeah. It was left there, that's a two different, I'm the second owner, absent Legion, so they left it here.
Is there a headstone there also?
No, not it.
Well, it's a monument, that's what I think memorial is.
Yeah, it's just a couple of stones, it really is. I don't think it's, I don't.
I think they took the plaque off about that.
Yeah.
But I want the building. So it seems to me it's a kind of natural extension of something that is already there. That would be one option. So you could call it a kind of natural evolution.
Well, and the other thing is, is like when I had Mark Hogan come and look at the property, he was very upset upon that the front entrance is sealed. There is no way at this point.
So there was a front entrance and it had been sealed at some point in the past?
That was happened, we just feel to come out the front door and go down the front steps.
Yeah, makes sense, you have a front door on the front, on the road.
Right, but now this is now enclosed thing, but it doesn't have a door. And he wasn't happy with that. It has to have a front access.
So, so one of the parameters is, will the change or expansion render the premise proportionately less adequate for use? And I believe in, in this case, adequate means okay for use. It looks like from the perspective of the fire department, this will be more adequate rather than less adequate.
Most definitely.
Um, how? From the sidewalk to the first board, how probably, how much distance is there between the sidewalk and the, and the front of the porch?
From the, well, from the front of the building is 14 feet from the sidewalk.
To the sidewalk?
Yep.
And that would be reduced to?
Well, it's already six feet anyways where that front entry is, or where the entry sticks out.
So much of an, yeah, six feet of entry already existing.
Right, right.
So, so I guess, how long is the width of the?
So the width of what's there now is about this amount, so we're going to just add that now.
Oh, okay, so it's going to be the same, it's only going to come out at the same, the same length as what's already there?
Yep, yep, just longer.
Are you putting up pillars?
Yes. That's what these things just look like.
Thanks, Robert.
Yes.
Any more questions?
And I do plan to hang my sign under the eaves of the porch. So I just want to make sure the sign is within the code and size, right size and everything, so I need to make sure.
So you've notified all your voters?
Yes, twice. Well, she has got the planning board.
Right.
They are well informed.
Is the signage separate?
Yes.
Once you've decided for sure what you want for the sign, you just come back and, you know, zone the board?
Yes, okay, alright, just making sure, never know if you want.
Just a question about the signage, so all the ducks are in order. Is it going to be lit?
I'm hoping to have like an LED light from the bottom of the, or from the top of the eave, dim onto the light.
Yeah, it should be dim.
I'm hoping that it can be on a timer and that it would shut off by 9:30, 10 o'clock. I mean, I don't want the tenant, I don't want the neighborhood lit up and, you know.
Probably 9:30 when you decide.
I don't even know if they make it, so I either have to shut it on and off or a kind of, I have it in duct tape. Well, I mean, they also have the motion activated. This is the light in the front for the people who are coming in. No, 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 this would just be for the sign, on the sign, yeah. No, we'll have lights on the porch that will be motion activated.
Any more questions for Robin?
Nope.
Hearing none, closed to public hearing. The board would like to discuss and make a decision now.
I think we should do, probably do it now and then she can, Robin can leave?
Yes.
Rather than waiting until the end of the meeting? Not that we're trying to chase you out. I think it's a good idea. Exactly. Well, according to what we have, a nonconforming use may be expanded or enlarged or changed for another nonconforming use after the board determines that after a public hearing, the proposed expansion, enlargement, or change will not materially increase the hazard or nuisance value of the nonconformity.
Okay, you bet that's the case here.
That's what I think too.
I'll make a motion based on that premise that we accept the proposed adjusted expansion to the plan as presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Should we be a little more specific?
I would suggest we be more specific. On the premise of what she said, I think.
Right, okay, so, no, I just, I'm just, was I put in an address or something like that? That's all, that's all. Are we ready to vote?
Do we have the motion?
You got a motion?
Yes, she's second.
Second, yeah.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Public hearing number two, another expansion of a nonconforming use. Ryan Harrison on 113 Prospect Hill. Matt May, Locks 18. Set back from road or attached garage.
This is Ryan, thanks for letting us through. Can you help? Have a seat. Alright, thank you guys. Alright. And, thank goodness, presented this last time, and I think you had certified letters go out to the voters. Would you like me to run through it?
Sure.
Okay, we bought, we bought Richard Nielsen's old place, it was that it caught fire. After doing some looking at it, we decided that that would be a great in-law speed for her parents. And one of the requirements of that is that it becomes an ADA-friendly compliant house. So someone with a wheelchair can get in and out of it. All of the outbuildings and garages are on the back half of the property, which makes that difficult. So our proposal was working with an arctic to redesign the residence to make it ADA-friendly and also allow for a one-car garage that was attached to the property. And so we had tried a bunch of different scenarios based on deus and trees and existing driveways and topology of where the pool is and everything. And we had come up with a one-car attached garage showing them in green. None of the houses conforming in terms of where buildings are and semi-automatics. So what we were asking for specifically was permission to be less than 65 feet from the center of the road to where the front of the garage would be.
Now, I guess my question is of the driveway. So you're going to have to change the driveway?
We were in talks with, and this came up, I believe, at the last meeting as well. We were in talks with the New Hampshire DOT. And, and they, there was a driveway curving process. I had started that. I think technically we were allowed to have two entrances as long as the property line hasn't changed since July of 1971. I've met with the folks at the Register of Deeds for Cheshire County and we were able to look back to 1969 and it's still the layout. So in terms of like what the DOT is looking for, to say we're fine with another entrance coming off of Prospect Hill to be able to attach to that. I think all those conditions are met, but I was kind of waiting on final paperwork for done and so just to make sure that we were all prepared for it.
Have you talked to our road agent?
Your road agent sent me to the New Hampshire Highway Department. The first Prospect Hill, I guess.
It's a state road, right.
So the house is already less than 65 feet from the road?
Oh, yeah, that's the, it's, it's, there's so many nonconforming things on all the homes right there. We have pools and, and next door, there's garages all kind of in and around the property line within inches of one another. So this is, this is one further example here, but we're probably 38 feet, I would say, probably from the front of the house.
The designation on the house is that it was built in 1797. We haven't confirmed that with the deed, but it's been there for. Yeah, and it, yeah, it's predated. We've looked at the library here and the museum last summer to see what we could find out about it. But whether it's 1797 or a little later, it's about there.
So do you want living conditions above the garage, is that part of the plan?
No, no, the garage is single. There are two stories here in the original cave that will probably be there. But for our case, right now, if anyone's, it's hard to see from the road, but this whole back section has been torn down and removed. What's standing is just the original cave that's up there now. And our plan is to build back and it would just be a one-story living arrangement. The upstairs will stay there and could potentially at some point in time become a second-floor living kind of thing. But for what we need right now, we're making arrangements just to have two people or one person and a caregiver be able to have access to the first floor.
And they would use the other drives, the existing driveway, right?
They could certainly do that. Currently, I'm, I'm using the garage and stuff that's there, my own personal things that are going on. So the intent with this one would be, or at least this one I agree would be for the rest of the entities there.
That residence is going to occupy what part of the house?
The whole thing.
The whole, okay.
Yeah, the whole thing. So my parents live in North Carolina, my dad's handicapped in a wheelchair and we are encouraging them to move up to be close to us. And this virus is a good example of how close I'd really like them to be so that I can help them. So when Dick's house next door caught fire, we looked at it and, and really admired the garage from Ryan's projects. He's a designer and for the opportunity to restore it to be a property for my parents. And we explored, we explored the fact that we might have to bring it all the way down. But as we started dismantling the back part where the majority of the fire was, we brought it all the way down to the stud inside, it's beautifully solid. It is a great, beautiful house. So now our intent is to restore, restore it for occupation on the bottom level. We'll bring it up to the second level, but we'll probably just set a door at the top of the stairs and wait to see what comes. But our intention is to move as quickly as possible with local contractors so that my parents can come move here and be close by.
Any other questions? Hearing none.
No questions. Go ahead.
Closed to public hearing.
I'm here as next-door neighbor and I want to say we're fully supportive of what they're doing here.
Absolutely, it's nice to see that building start to.
Reveal right across the street. Sorry, it's taking a little longer than first anticipated.
It always does.
Nothing happens quickly, nothing good.
Can this, if it's accepted, can this be based on the production that we hear from the state DOT?
The only thing I can say with that is that we have, we have done the homework that they asked us to do to confirm that the property has not changed date since 1971. The concern that we have is that just like the town offices, the state offices shut down. We're queued up with a loan from Meskoma Bank to hire Dave Kern to support our local economy to start right away. And we have done all the background to make sure that it is, that it crosses, you know, checks all the boxes and that we're safe. But what we don't want to do is get stuck in a delay that then means we can't pay local contractors in their line with it.
I totally understand that, but I feel very uncomfortable in giving you the special exception or the expansion of basically a nonconforming use without actually seeing something from the DOT that it has been accepted.
Conversations you've had with the DOT, do you have any email exchanges?
It was a, it was a call from him and he had looked up on Google. The other thing besides getting in the, 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 they were looking at site to make sure that there wasn't anything blocking site on each way. And he looked on Google Earth and said, oh, you got a bunch of driveways all coming out right there. I'm like, yes, we do. And he's like, you should be fine, I don't see any issue or any problem with that. But his main thing was just to look at the existing deed from that date and said, even if that is the case, we can still petition to go around it. It's just more paperwork and more time. If you look back and if everything was the same prior to this, that takes a lot of headache out of it. So it didn't seem like there was going to be any hit up there. But it was just, you know, it's kind of a timing of all this. I didn't want to pay to get a permit and then realize we couldn't build a garage or, or, you know, so it's kind of like dominoes kind of coming out.
The order of goes, we understood, was to do the homework with DOT, bring it to you, come to the second hearing and then with that, get the confirmation from DOT, start the loan and begin the process. So, you know, if, if what we received from you was a yes, however, we need email confirmation, you know, these are unprecedented times. So if we can, we would be happy to follow up by email, but I don't think we're going to have another public. So we'd be happy to connect and connect all the dots, but we, and show you the homework.
Yeah, I, I don't feel that we'll need another public hearing. We could issue the expansion of a nonconforming use based on you're getting the permit from DOT and you're going to have to get, you know, contingent.
And we would want that either way. If we have a garage without a driveway, it doesn't do much good, or a driveway without a garage. So I think that's fair.
You're going to have, so before it really becomes effective, we need to see, you know, the letter or the email or whatever DOT decides to send you. We could base our decision on that.
So if you could match an email exchange?
So would the vote tonight be that you would vote in favor pending the successful approval and review of the email exchange?
That's why I'm looking at it.
That's the way I'm looking at it.
Yeah, and we want both of them too, so.
Yeah, I agree.
I think I believe, I think that's more important. Hopefully they have it all down, so.
They're all working remotely, no doubt, so they might get a faster response.
I have one question, do you know how to contact this board, do you know?
Even though I helped with the website?
Yeah.
I think, yes.
If you send it to me, then I can send it, send it to all the, to the board.
Yes, yeah, there, yeah, there, then I, then going back.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Well, we can, we can certainly do that.
And, yeah, it's a different topic, so we.
Tom to make the motion.
What'd you say?
Want Tom to make the motion, I want you to make the motion to Jody.
We could allow, I haven't done it for so long yet, been chair for so long. Go ahead, Tom.
Is there a paragraph application or anything like that for this?
I thought for, not that I.
I would say I couldn't find nonconforming use in.
Well, it's on page 22.
How well you found it?
Article 10. Number D. So it is article 10.
I have page 22.
Is yours on page 22?
Yeah, mine is.
Tom, let me see it here, let me give it to you. See it? D?
Yes. Okay, so I'll say that based on ZDA articles 10, letter D, a nonconforming use may be expanded or enlarged or changed in another nonconforming use after the board just determines after a public hearing, the proposed expansion, enlargement, or change will not materially increase the hazard or nuisance value of the nonconformity. On the property of?
Ryan Harrison.
Ryan Harrison on Prospect Hill.
Ryan and Megan.
With one stipulation that the final approval will be based on the.
Subject to.
Subject to the email confirmation from the DOT as far as the driveway is concerned.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You can leave.
Thank you. Stay well, everyone.
Thank you.
I think we're all thinking about ways to help the local community.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying with the website. Actually, we've been approached by a couple people of how can the website help support people who are in need? And how can we build a band of people who are ready to reach out to those who need food? Or kids who need, who need Wi-Fi packs at home so that they can do their school? And so I think, you know, I know people reached out to Ryan today and we're talking, well, I talked to the principal and we're going to talk to the churches, but I think we really have a huge opportunity to rally together around supporting people because I think we should be prepared for this, to impact this through the summer.
I think we should, and I think that's really wonderful that you're doing that. Could you use the Walgreen and the Clownian as well to disseminate?
Sure, yeah, that's, well, you were just asked to do some of that and also distribute information about the broadband or about the fiber optics. And, and my office is right on the common too, in the personal building. And I'm still working from there as the only employee out there, everybody else is home. But we have some opportunities to really leverage. So I would encourage you to, you know how to reach Ryan and I'm his wife, Keef, Megan Keef. And I'm right here too, but we're rallying around what we can do. So as the, as the boards continue to think about what's needed, what I think is often missing from town meetings, and I get on my friends, are younger generations. And you need us to lean into this, not lean away. And so I'm ready to help support that. Stay well. Thanks.
Alright, now we're on to new business, Sharon Kirk.
Well, I don't have anything to put up there, do you want me to hand up these? Yep. So I've lived here for 35 years and I've done many different businesses, well, not businesses. I've offered many different services to the area. And over the last year, Deb and I, Deb Miller and I have reached out to different people that have needed errands, like housekeeping, appointments, driving them to something. And within doing that, I reached out to my insurance, you know, different people and they said, well, you should get a state ID number to go along with your taxes and whatever. And it opened up a whole thing and conquered. And they said, well, you need to have an office in your house. Which, I went to Walgreens to try to print these out, but the printer was down. But I do, I do have pictures of my office, which I did by their regulations. And basically, we get calls and we try to help the community, not just here, around. They'll say, Sharon, can you come drive me to whatever? I say, sure. If I can't, then I say, buddy, make a phone call. And within their guidelines, they said, I needed to have your approval for my office and a fire approval, a health inspector, chak-sah, and whatever. And I said, I'm on air. I said, seriously, okay, so I've been, so I called them and I'm like, what am I going to do to get this last part of this hurdle done so that we can keep offering services which are really well needed here, you know? And, and this is where I'm at with it. They said, we need to go here and have this meeting, show you my office if you want to see it, because I couldn't print them out because it was broke, and get your guidance from there. Because truly, we're just trying to help out this area and around us.
So this is a home occupation which is allowed. Yes, it is. For real, yeah.
Nobody comes and goes from my house. Yeah, so nobody comes and goes from my house. I'm not a hairdresser. I'm not, it's just, you know, I get a phone call. I could get a call from Tommy. I could get a call from you, Sharon. Can you help me? If I can't, I'll call up whoever, you know, see what we can do to be helpful. And I think with Concord, there's just so much change and everything that they're double-dawing their eyes and everything, and I get that. Yeah, so anyway, that's what we're trying to do. And if you want to see my office, I can show you.
Sure, let's see your office.
So I live in a log cabin. This is one of the walls. And that's just the other side.
That's nice.
Yeah, and desks and taxis. I was working on my taxes.
Yeah, that shows here.
So it's, I think Tommy knows, many people know where I live.
Yeah, off of...
Off the valley. If you sold me the property, I remember. And so it's, I'm just trying to jump through the hoops and...
We understand.
See what we can do, you know? They said I had to have the smoke detectors, which I call Mark Otten, that are the grounded, wired in. So I redid all those. I put them all through the house, which he said, really, you only need them there. But I said, let's do the whole house.
While we're at it.
While we're at it. So that's been done. And it's just a drive back to my house. And I have 52 acres. Not going to bother anybody. We're just trying to get this stuff to work out.
So from us, you just need the top part of this filled out that you comply with zone?
Exactly. And then I go to Mark Otten, which he said, once I got this, he's been to my house.
Yeah.
And I got to see Chuck, and then I don't know about the other one. There was one law there. I think I asked him, but I can't remember.
Zoning, fire?
Yeah.
An elf.
So the elf would be Chuck, I think.
Yeah.
I assign zoning part for you.
Okay.
And then on this one right here.
Perfect. I just need one copy, which I'll probably make three copies just because I've been involved with them, but the other stuff may have lost it. So I've now made copies of everything.
Intuit to have copies.
The copies of everything now.
Absolutely.
We're going to overlook the end-stage renal dialysis units.
I also wrote a letter of approval. It said, if you were on approval, I have a letter so that she can show me the licensing board.
That's good. Day to day is put an ad in paper so that we would let the local areas take in this for the top part. That we would let the community know what we were doing. And so we put it in there. And after doing that, between Deb and I, we had probably 30 phone calls. I was like, oh, boy, we weren't looking to do that much work. But, you know, I actually, I'm very impressed with what we do because I get some calls from people that can't even get out of their homes. You know, and it's my, it's my pleasure. Tomorrow, I'm going up somewhere in Walpole to bring somebody some groceries because she can't get out, you know.
Will you help a mother of friends of mine out at work?
Yeah.
So...
Sharon helped me.
And we need, we need somebody to do these things.
Yeah.
This is an aging population.
Yeah, me too.
I can't believe it.
So, yeah.
So the last home business that we dealt with was with Hope.
Yep.
And she put her application to the state and they denied it because he didn't show her proof of residency.
Oh, I've done all of that, all of that other stuff.
And we didn't see a form like, like what you presented us tonight.
Yeah.
So...
You can keep one if you want for the next people.
I think you saved us one move.
Well, I've been doing this with them, like I said, for almost six months. And I keep waiting to hear back from them. And then they'll say, well, look for your email. And I'll hear a month later, and then they said, okay, now you need to put an ad in the paper. We do that. Four weeks later, okay, now you need to do... So I finally got somebody on the phone. And I said, look, just give me the list. And this was the last part of it.
Good to go up there and stand there.
I actually, we, I did. They wanted criminal background checks on us. And I said, be right up.
That's right.
So, and they said, oh, you passed with flying colors. I'm like, I'm like, okay. $15 later, which is fine, but we get you out up there. It was nice. So, and I understand they have to go through their steps.
Yes, they do.
And that's okay.
Okay, she also...
She was all the same.
Okay, so do I need to give this back to you? Or the top, no, I just have to fill it in and I'm good to go?
You put a copy, just put your name on it.
Well, you guys can keep those for the next person.
No, that's a good idea.
Actually, might have to go through the same thing because it will save them probably three months. Maybe wait on hold on the phone. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
My brother, I like to say that the key was unpunished.
Right, yeah.
Are you going to make sure?
First of all, I just have to say, I apologize. I, my phone downstairs has a button, and when there's a message waiting, it blinks. The one downstairs didn't have it, and I didn't get upstairs until close to 6:15. I tried calling you, but...
I just wanted to be sure that...
Yeah, we're here.
You are going to proceed. I'm just going to put this up with my man. Oh, great. Thank you very much. I think I got it. So my name is Tom Hannah, and I represent Regiro Processing.
Yep.
Processing. I've only represented Joe for years, so I don't, I'm not exactly sure the names. And we went to the, first of all, I'm a lawyer for the firm of BCM. B as in boy, BCM Environmental and Landlaw. And I practiced in Keene for 40 years and been here probably 40 times. So we went to the planning board to file our application last week, which is all I believe we needed to do. But the planning board felt we should come here first, so we're here. The proposal is on the same property that this board granted a special exception on in 2011, I think it was. And subsequently, the planning board granted a site plan review. DES granted a permit. And so the, the, the proposal now is to install a driveway on the same site as was previously approved and actually install the driveway that was previously approved. Pre, currently, they're using this, this driveway over Hushkins now and it's an easement. So DES wanted Regiro to use a driveway directly onto its site. So this, this driveway here was actually approved by this board 10 years ago. And so now we're, we're going to put in this driveway. That's, that's the one, that's number one in terms of addition. Number two is on this driveway, you can see this other crosshatched thing here. On this driveway will be a scale. And then next to that will be a 24 by 40-foot modular office building, essentially to monitor the scale. And also Joe's mother will move in there, not to live, but she's an employee. And so there'll be a couple of people in this office. And the office will have, because of the office, there will be state-approved septic system and a well. So those are the only changes. Now, the Regiro purchased land over here, but this, this line right here is the former property line. But this line is important now because the site plan that is proposed to the planning board is going to be limited to the prior lot that was, that received the approvals and will not use this property over here. We may have to come back to the zoning board for a special exception if we expand the activity onto this other land, but there's no plans to do that at this time. So I want to just, I want to tell you why I'm here.
You're here to get an application for a special exception, right?
No. I don't think we should have to get a special exception. So what we're here is to ask this board to, to so indicate that, that this is not an expansion of use, that this is not an expansion of, of the activity, and therefore, no additional special exception is needed. I'm going to read you a letter and let you have a copy of a letter from the town's lawyer. Sorry, I came in about... Two minutes later than I should have to be. So after Regiro got his permit from DES in January of 2019 to, to allow the MSW, initial solid waste, after, after that permit was granted, the selectman asked Jeremy Hawkinsmith to write a letter. I think I have a couple more copies of this. I'm sorry, you didn't have more, but...
Are you talking about the February 11th, 2019?
Yeah, good, so you've got a letter, you've got a copy. You have this already or you... Did you share that? Do you want to, actually, I wanted to see.
I'll be done a little closer.
I'm not supposed to do that.
Wait just a second. I do have one more. So the part I want to emphasize is the second paragraph. But to introduce it, Jeremy Hawkinsmith said it's come to the attention that Regiro Processing recently obtained amendments to its permit from, on the Walpole site. The permit he's talking about is a permit from the Department of Environmental Services that regulates solid waste control. While the Cheshire County, Cheshire Superior Court has ruled that the town of Walpole cannot regulate what type of waste facility it accepts, it must comply with town ordinances and regulations concerning the permit modifications, for example, or i.e., the relocation of the entrance and expansion into neighboring lot. Before those changes are put in place, both modifications require site plan review. I agree with that. And the later modification requires a special exception, and I agree with that. But we are not moving on to a neighboring lot. And so from my perspective, and I know Jeremy Hawkinsmith agrees with me, the town's lawyer, we're not expanding the use and the, and there's no change of use that would require a modification of the special exception granted back in 2011. Now, the, that special exception did say any change should come back to the zoning board. But zoning board can only, it has to be a change of use over which the zoning board has jurisdiction. And there is no change of use and no, more importantly, no expansion of the activity that allows the zoning board to have a hearing and determine whether, whether a modification of site plan is allowed. So I think what the planning board is hoping for is you're imprimatur on that position. From my perspective, I have no problem with the board seeking counsel if you want to talk to your town lawyer on my, my position that no special exception is needed for, for this limited activity. Once again, putting the driveway where it was approved previously, adding a scale, essentially at grade. You've seen those in some of the other Keen, I guess, slightly raised scale. And then this modest modular office building, 24 feet by 40 feet. Those are the only changes, along with the septic system, which has to be state-approved anyway.
I would think it's a change and that we do need a special exception. But I think you're right that we need to consult Jeremy Hawkinsmith. So I guess what we ought to do is...
A continuance?
A continuance of this, you know, put this on hold until we talk to him.
What, what does a continuance mean? Because this is a precursor to going to the planning board.
Well, all, all meetings are canceled until April 4th, 6th. No, no town meetings can be held whatsoever. So I can probably find out something from Mr. Hawkinsmith before then. But nothing can really happen until we have a meeting. And I can't tell you one now.
Anything else from me?
I've got a question.
Sure.
You referred to that boundary line.
This one right here.
Right here.
Right.
On the other side of that boundary over here, whose land is that?
That's Regiro's land.
And still yours?
Yeah, it's Regiro's land, and it's been annexed to the site. And the original site plan is, let me make sure I've got the right boundary line. It's this, that's this land right here. And that, that was the original site plan, approved site plan, original zoning board approval. And the activities that are proposed now are going to be confined to that same site. If we come, if we decide to use this, then we'll be back. That's like what zoned industrial? Same, oh, yeah, it's the same, it's the same.
Yeah, it's all the same.
Oh, same, same part as a park.
And your office building, you have some of your employees in it?
Same number of employees they have now, three, I think.
But they'll be working in an office in nine months.
Don't they already have an office?
Yeah, they do have an office.
We have to replace it a lot.
Yeah, and you have, you have, I know you've had some people on, in an office, in a trailer.
Yeah.
Yeah, it has a, my brother's in there for dispatching the trucks, the trailer that we redid.
So it'll be the same.
So is that other building still there?
Yes, it is. A little trailer there.
Especially now because the new building is not there.
That one might come out once it's, I'm not sure yet. That one might come out once it's, I'm not sure yet.
Does the, does the Skill House mean that there's going to be a change in traffic flow heavier later?
No, the approval from D E S, which includes the municipal solid waste, has the same tonnage permit, same tonnage allowance as previously, which was 200 tons per week.
And that's, is that capped or something like that in weight? So that's how much you can only put in?
Correct, that's the capacity of the...
Capacity of it.
You guys have approved it for that for C and D, but what's happening now is that all the other companies, there's very few private trash companies anymore, they're all big conglomerates, and their dumps are closing, and transfer stations, like, you know, just like the incinerator closed. Once they close, now I dump on my competitors who is up in Newport and Hampshire. So I take the trash from Walpole and I drive all the way to Newport, dump it, and then come back. Stuff from Westmoreland, they go all the way to Newport and bring it back. The truck comes back. The only difference now, that same truck will, instead of driving to Newport first, will just drive back to my station, dump there, and then it'll be removed from there.
Dumps in the building, and then when there are four or five truckloads, I guess, is going to a truck.
To one tractor trailer.
Trailer. And then, then be taken off-site.
Do you have a scale now?
No, right now, I use Coal Rivers scale. I scale them out of Coal Rivers material scale.
So the scale is a substitute for that scale?
Yeah, it's correct. Right now, I'm going in and out, and I'm paying $25 each time a truck gets scaled on Coal Rivers material scale. I'd like to put that towards my own scale.
How big is the scale? Is it the size of a truck?
The scale is the size of a tractor truck, yes.
So it's the length of a truck?
Of a tractor truck, yeah, 70 feet long, 10 feet wide. Be just like, similar like the one that's up there at the lady construction now. They have two of them, and one beside them, and that's just up there.
So the employees who are going to be working in the office are presently working out of your home?
Correct, yeah, my daughter, my mother.
Presumably your home is not there.
What's that?
Presumably your home is not there.
Yes, no, not the front there.
Okay, so they would be moving to the site?
Correct, yeah. Then they would operate the scale, and when my trucks came in, they would be next to it, and they would just tend to it at that point.
So the load on the tractor trailer only gets weight going out, nothing gets weight coming?
Well, my trucks will get weight coming in, and the tractor trailer gets weight coming out. So in other words, it takes like three or four, my truck loads at, you know, five or six tons at a shop, and then the tractor trailer load at 26 pounds.
What if one of the trucks coming in weighed by itself? Just curious.
The packer trucks usually weigh around 26,000, and then when they're loaded, they're at 33 to 38,000 pounds.
I have another question, and that is, when you look at the conditions for the special exception this board granted you 10 years ago, it, aside from talking about operations may not be changed or expanded without returning to us for permission, it also says, should any of the D E S permits be amended, suspended, terminated, and/or renewed, the documents indicating amendment, suspension, termination, or renewal shall be filed with the C V A. And I just wanted to check, so have you been keeping these notices up to date? Is that it? Have you been keeping those permits filed with us?
Yes.
Is that it?
That's it right there.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, the D E S is, they come down, they inspect my facility somewhere between three and four times a year, and they're constantly on us for paid work and...
So those aren't the notices they're signing out, though?
Yes, so a permit is obtained from the Department of Environmental Services, permits be on file with the S V C V A.
He's talking about inspections.
Right, yeah.
I'm talking about permits.
Right, exactly. So that's what you just passed to Jeremy.
That's right. Ken, you have more?
This is your, your application for a septic line review?
Yes. I've referenced that, so I feel like you should have that too, in addition, there's a permit.
You guys don't have it, they certainly have it together.
They do have it.
They do have it.
So it looks like we've got what we need, and I'll talk to Jeremy, and then we'll go over there.
Would you like to keep the plan?
Yes, please.
Start it in full. So if this is approved, all you really need for the town is to be the building permit for the Skill House?
No, no, we have to go through site plan, site plan review with the planning board.
The site plan review is only good for a year. It's the plan. That's what I thought. Once it's approved.
Yep, great.
Oh, I see, once it's approved, okay.
You've got a year to do your, do your care, right? Take care of your business.
Now, could I ask you, were you at the planning board hearing?
I was.
Were you at the planning board hearings?
You mean last week?
No, a couple of years ago. Are we very active from the audience?
It's possible, I don't know.
Because I guess I need to ask you whether you feel like you can sit on this board after your activities, which were quite, quite active, I will say, more than most of the audience in opposition to the plan, which is virtually identical? And I need to know whether you think that you can be objective.
You know, I'm really rather flattered that you remembered this so well. I've already decided that if we come back for a public hearing, that I would be recusing myself.
But you're participating tonight.
This is not a public hearing.
Well, that would satisfy me if you accused yourself, because I would think that you would paint the entire process if you did participate. As a matter of law, not, nothing personal against you, but clearly, I recall very specifically your involvement, and it was, should I would say, more accentuated than 90% of the people in the building.
Did I get up and remove my clothes or something, Mr. Hammett?
You just did enough to justify refusal, and told me you're going to do that, so I'm satisfied.
Well, I think if you ask that chairwoman, we'll hear from her that I've already discussed this with her.
I'm fine.
I'm sorry, I'd just like to make the point that I'm not doing this at your request, that I'm doing this because I thought it was the right thing to do, and I think it has to be, at least, correct.
Well, the right thing to do would have been not to have participated right now.
I disagree with that.
You've already, you've already participated with your colleagues, and so I object to the fact that you have done so thus far, but I appreciate the fact you're going to disqualify yourself if there's a public hearing, which I don't think there'll have to be anyway. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for my needness sincerely, literally, keeping your distance. It's a great way of doing it. Thank you.
This year?
Yeah, thanks.
All right, just here sort of preliminarily, you just have to file a form, I don't know where that form is given, I'll get your opinion then. But we currently are here representing Walpole Framery, where I'm also the owner of the building at 532 Main Street. The Walpole Framery has recently basically taken over the Walpole wash and dry space. We're going to the planning board for redesign of the parking area and for getting a nice front on the front of the building. So we're going to be in front of them next month for that. But part of our plan was to also deal with, actually, like all the things, and at least we'll start from the back page and work going to the front. But the existing sign down there, you probably have noticed it, it probably stands out in Walpole. Everybody's wondering why that never got there. But we measured it up, it's approximately 224 by 48 on each of the signs, so the signs are basically about almost 19 feet by 4 feet, and they're three of them. And so with the wash and dry going away, our thought process is to move to a two-sign sign, and to reduce, the sign needs to within the parameters of the pole, and actually, it's 112 feet from pole to pole, outside of pole to pole, and inside the pole is about 104 inches. So we'd be going from like an 18 and a half foot sign down to about a nine-foot sign, in terms of its width. And we're also going to reduce the height of it from three feet down to two feet, so that would be the thought, and each of these signs would be approximately nine by three. So going from 18 and a half down to 14, three signs down to this. And then the idea would be to, it currently has two, like huge lights on each side of it that just kind of shine off everywhere, and the idea would be to actually put a little roof on top of this and let the lights shine down on the sign from within the roof, so it no longer be seen over the sign.
It's very attractive.
My question, though, is...
So we're going to reduce any pre-existing...
The non-conforming one is definitely way too big, but I don't think we're allowed to reduce the non-conformity unless you then perform. Unless you're going to, unless it's going to become 32 square feet, you would need a variance. So I think that's right, and I was thinking how strange that they're not allowed to reduce the non-conformity, stay non-conforming. Yeah, because there's some regulations about dimensions, non-conforming expansion, oddly enough.
We could all, actually, we could...
You're reducing, I know, it's sort of dimensionality. A non-conforming lot, this is a lot that's not sunk, a non-conforming lot may only voluntarily be used. So that's not, say, similar? All the signage things are either...
I mean, the worst thing would be is if we just took all the signs out, and still have a 30-foot sign.
Another unfortunate thing that I've been reading about non-conforming uses is that they don't let you change, even if it's an improvement, you can't change your non-conforming uses. But this is the same use, and you're just reducing the non-conformity, so that should be fine. Do you think we need a hearing to change the non-conforming use to a less non-conforming
Do you think so, just to be on the safe side?
Well, that means putting it off at this rate, don't you? Is there somewhere we can get around this?
But is the ground, you know, at this point, soft enough to even dig new, you know, put new posts and everything up there?
The posting is about the same, they're using the same...
The same post?
The same framery is going to, the only thing they're going to change is the nice little shingle...
And it's bigger than 32 square feet?
The two signs combined are, yeah. Each one is under that, the two signs combined. So are you saying that these two signs, because they're under one structure, they have to be one sign?
Because otherwise, they have to be 100 feet apart, or have a variance, maybe together.
I guess I would do that would be for one meter, right?
And this is, this is a reduction of a non-conformity, it's not an expansion of one. So I wonder, I wonder if that's all right, if you can...
Can we replace one non-conformity with another?
But that has been there requiring to...
It does.
So the non-conformity has to do with the fact that this exceeds the...
Size.
The size, and it was granted before the sign ordinance was written, is that it?
Right, the sign was put up about 50 years ago.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, that's good, well.
Did you say 50?
Yeah, I don't know what to do, I guess. It's been there a long time.
It's been there a long time.
Been there a long, long time.
Which, Rob, that's the top one, right? The Walpole Tire?
Well, Walpole Tire actually is a fairly...
It's the oldest, it's just there, right?
Yeah, so they've been there, let's think about this, so Big and Murray over in the ones that had Walpole Tire, they were owns a lot of buildings, so that would have been, Big's been there for 10 years now, so I think Big and Murray were there for 15 to 18, in that range, so I'd say 25 to 28 years, that's not happening.
Would you be willing to let me contact the Municipal Association and find out if we can just go ahead and reduce the non-conformity without adhering to everything, and let me know?
That would be great, I appreciate that.
And if they say, forget it, you have to go to a hearing, I can let you know that. They won't delay things, but either way, if we have to do the hearing, there's nothing we can do about the delay.
Right. We have the planning board next month anyway, and we do that.
And I have a question. So it would be the week after, if we found out, we'd have the hearing? If they need one, and so we can have a next one?
Or in next, next meeting, whatever that is.
Yeah, we can get back in here after April, nobody knows. My question is to replacement of sign, is it at least 10 feet from the front, rear, and side lot lines?
Did you get Glenn, okay with him going to second shelf and you going to top shelf?
Yes, he's actually very happy to get tires on the sign. It's strange having the eagle there, eagle fly, eagle tires.
I have a question for you, I cast for. So I heard you showed the plan to the planning board, and all I could think of was that lovely little garden that's out front, is that going to be, you know, is that going to be removed because of the parking?
Yeah, the parking's, well, the parking's going to go along the front there, but we're going to have like about a four-foot berm there, so it's actually going to be expanded.
So there's going to be plants?
There's going to be more, there's going to be more planting than there is now.
I always like that when I spend a lot of time. Okay, I'm going to have to do that.
It'll also be in front of the building, too.
Yeah, that's it.
We're going to try to add some green space there.
Very good.
So in the case that we do need to have a public hearing for changing the non-conforming use, do we want to vote to set a hearing if needed?
I would say so.
And then that way...
Based on information that you learned from the Municipal Association.
So they want a copy of what our ordinance says.
So I would need a motion.
Well, I knew that we have a hearing, a public hearing next month, in case the Municipal Association decides that we need to have a public hearing to change the non-conforming use of the sign to another non-conforming use size, a reduction of the non-conforming use size.
And if it's not necessary, can we say something to the effect now that based on what we gathered for information, that we could approve what we have presented here today? gathered for information, that we could approve what we have presented here today?
I would think if the municipal association says we don't need a hearing, it's fine. I can just tell Mr. Gasper that's that.
I think we should write a, have a letter written.
Right. But we don't need to make a vote, tell him.
I think he'll trust us.
I know you want to ask, I want to ask anybody who recuses themselves.
Okay.
I'm glad I haven't turned it down.
Let's have a vote.
All right, Liam, motion in second?
She's second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'll let you know when I find out.
Very much appreciated.
Thank you. You're welcome. Did you enjoy tonight?
Yes.
And she's not a redhead either.
Come a little closer, Dr. Gasper.
No, I'm gonna stay right here. And I sent an email to Mary Lou and also to you. And it was something I wanted to bring up to the zoning board. And I've already brought it to the planning board. They said that the zoning board is in charge of that. But I gathered that they're of signs, or at least compliant with signs. So I just had a concern about when I drove by the Jiffy Mart, that there are these waving signs there and they're advertising a product which is already advertised on a regular sign. So I was questioning whether these, you know, are something that are permitted use in our town. And I'm guessing that maybe they're not, they've never been dealt with because they're the first ones I've seen in Waffle. So perhaps it's a type of sign that hasn't been in existence here before. I'm very familiar with them from other places I've lived, and I mentioned that in the letter. So my concern is that when I went to search about these signs, I know now they're called feather flags because they're shaped like a feather. And I could hardly find anything except advertisements for them. You know, when I did the Google search, so then I did the Yahoo search. But I had to really search a long time to find, you know, towns that have been trying to deal with this concept in their, under their ordinances for signs. So I gathered that they have become controversial in some areas because they've been dealt with. And even in some of the towns in Hampshire, which I can tell you about if you want to know. But it appears that, you know, possibly they are out of compliance in that if they are conceived as temporary signs, they've been there quite a while. So it's not like, oh, we're just, you know, like a building that's for sale or a yard sale, that's a temporary sign. These appear to have been there for several weeks. And my prediction is that they're so inexpensive and you can get them custom made, a lot of ads for them, that, you know, they could be popping up all over the place before we know it. And they're really kind of distracting. And they also detract from the, you know, the character of our town. So I'm not sure where to go with it, whether it's a new ordinance that needs to be introduced and whether that's something that needs to be done cooperatively with planning board. But I wanted to bring it up here.
It seems like our ordinance already prohibits them unless they are 100 feet from another sign and the proper setback, which it doesn't sound like they are.
And I don't know, and I don't know when they introduce a new sign, if they need to come and request that.
Yes.
So they could be out of compliance on that basis. Eric said that he was gonna come tonight.
He just left a picture?
Okay, you have a nice big picture. I just added the link on my, in my email to Mary Lou, which we'd actually have to look at.
There are four there now.
There's two and two.
Yeah, you know that we are not the enforcers and you have to...
I didn't know all that, I don't know who enforces it.
The selectmen.
I know, who brings it up to the selectmen?
Well, we can...
Do I bring it up to the selectmen or do you bring it up?
We would bring it up.
Okay.
We would have to...
You could, we could.
Okay.
It wouldn't hurt if we did.
Right.
So I could forward that letter to the select board as well, the letter that I wrote.
We write a letter to the select board.
A special one?
I think that your letter, what the selectmen need to hear is what part of our zoning is violating?
Well, that's where you would be more knowledgeable about that. I, you know, I just don't know what the setback issues are. I know some of the towns, when I read about it, some of the towns would have a prohibition against something that is movable like that. You know, sort of slapping around or any kind of immovable sign. There are also, you know, restrictions in various towns on how the signs can be. It can't be moving and lit up and flashing and different things like that. So I'm not sure, because I don't have the, you know, I haven't read zoning work.
You know, it's not necessarily just a setback. I'm looking and it says oscillating, rotating, flashing, neon, or other tubular gas. I wonder if these don't oscillate.
Well, they definitely move constantly.
Well, I always think of oscillating as just, you know, rotating, left and back and forth.
Yeah, but it also says rotating, so somehow whoever wrote this was drawing a distinction.
But it is possible that it needs to be adapted, the ordinance needs to be adapted to reflect this new type of thing, you know, which probably didn't exist when these were made.
But it definitely, definitely our ordinance have a distance, 100 foot between signs requirement. And here are four signs all very close together.
Right.
And I think you just, any sign, you have to come before us, right? So for permissions. So perhaps what you could do is find some examples of violation of our zoning ordinance with this particular type of sign?
What do you mean by that? Find some...
So that we don't have to drive around town and look if you know where there is a...
Is that the, is that the Jiffy Mart?
She said the Jiffy Mart.
You know, where you get the gasoline. I think you might even be able to see there, they have the, there's a smaller sign that has the price.
Which, and there are two signs there.
And then they also have these flashing things, then it's also on the actual machines where you get your gas. So there's multiple signs for the same thing. And it's just, it's a new fad, you know, people want to get them.
So this is what you're talking about.
Yeah, so here you have, for example, you have, he basically took the same picture I did. So he's looking at it from, he's probably, as I did as well, he's sort of standing in front of the gas station and looking at these which are along that edge, along the grass there. Then you've got the gas stations, they have their, you know...
Oh, yeah, there I see Mr. Gasper's sign.
They have signs. And then there's this, we have DEF on the fuel island and the price is there, which I, you know, I don't know what the regulations are. But this is the new type of thing and there are four of them, there's two and two. So what, so what you're saying I could do is I could, what, bring it to their attention as well?
Right.
Okay, I'll do that, I don't want to fair enough.
Where these particular signs are that are violating the zoning and we could write a letter?
We need to write a letter.
I'd say probably it needs to come from you, but that, you know, that you put it and that you've, you know, seen it. And if you haven't seen it, just drive by.
No, I've seen it.
You've seen it? I've only noticed it recently, I don't know if I was blind before, but I was driving by a few days ago and I really noticed it.
I don't remember seeing them in the wintertime.
It was just, you know, like, I want to say, two, three weeks ago.
When the snow was down, I don't remember seeing them.
Yeah.
I think they put them out...
Maybe they couldn't get them in, you know, the ground was frozen, I don't really know. I hadn't looked up close to see how they put them in. I was just driving by and then I got out and took a picture.
It's like they were on some kind of stick, I don't know what it, call it a stick. And shoved it, of course, had a rod and shoved it to the ground.
Okay, well, thank you very much, I don't want to keep you any longer.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it.
So I think we're gonna need a letter, not only for these tall flag signs, but these other two.
That would be a second total. Okay, so it's distance from the center of the road and the 100-foot sign.
Right.
100 feet between the signs.
Nobody's gonna go for the option.
And what is this one over, what is that, is that the, is that a tire?
That's a snowmobile.
That's a snowmobile sign.
Oh, okay.
And by the way, it says foot, these two signs on the other side of the driveway.
Right.
So there are four of these banana signs, I think.
I think if we don't, yeah, ask the zoning to do something, this one won't get allowed.
No.
Right.
No. Okay, I will write something.
You can go along the next strips and see these things, just lining them.
So they're closer than required?
They're closer than 100 feet apart.
Center line of the road of 12.
Is it the center line on Route 12 or is it the edge? I think it's the edge for some reason, on the State Highway. But I have to look that up again.
Mary Lou?
I'll look it up.
Okay, well, I just mentioned about the site plan. It was good for a year, if you don't, if you don't, he said that that was approved...
What they, they are doing it for.
But they have a year to do it and they didn't do it. So it's no longer approved.
It's no longer valid.
Yeah, right. I didn't know if you knew what I meant by that.
I didn't, I didn't. No, I did not get that.
In other words, the planning board gives you one year to accomplish some, an approved site plan. Well, if they don't do it, it lasts 11 years, because they're gonna go back, this is a new...
It's new, it's a bit changed.
This is brand new, new, going back to where the original entrance was supposed to be.
So they were supposed to modify something 11 years ago and they never take it?
Not supposed to modify it, they were supposed to do it now.
All right, let's move along to our next, all right, I think now that I'd like to go into executive session.
Okay, I think the fellow with the camera should now...
Yes, I'm sorry, when you have to leave.
You have to vote to go into executive session?
Yes.
Okay.
So I need a public hearing, move to executive session?
I move we go into executive session?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.